Because you got your other job.
I probably just got fired. I forgot to quieten down.
Ted's in here.
I don't know. I'm serious.
Oh, my goodness. Everyone's so quiet.
I know.
Must be time to start. We're almost there. One minute.
No, it's seven. All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. It is 7:00 PM and I call the October 13th, 2025 School Board Meeting to order. The Holman Board of Education and the School District of Holman acknowledge that our schools are located on the ancestral homelands of the Ho-Chunk, Sauk and Fox and Dakota peoples. We celebrate and honor these lands and their sacred significance to indigenous peoples. And today, we also acknowledge Indigenous Peoples' Day and reflect on both the historical injustices and ongoing challenges faced by indigenous peoples. We welcome the opportunity to learn from, engage with the indigenous communities in our district, and we express our gratitude for their continued contributions to our community. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Board Clerk Maggie Smith, would you please call the roll?
Lindsay Nied.
Here.
Maggie Smith, here. Bridget Todd Robbins.
Here.
Barb Wunsch.
Here.
Abigail Holtie.
Excused.
Jennifer Deek.
Here.
Khadija Islam.
Here.
Chris Lau.
Here.
All right. With seven of the seven board members present, I declare a quorum. I note that the agenda has been posted, distributed, and sent to the local media. With this in mind, are there any changes to this agenda? I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as published.
So moved.
Chris has moved?
Second.
Khadija has seconded to approve the agenda as published. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as published, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve the published agenda has passed. And we do not have public participation this evening. So we are moving on to recognition and thank yous, Dr. Mueller.
Yeah, I wanted to start this evening to recognize some of our board members that are sitting at the table. So each year, the Wisconsin Association of School Boards recognizes our board members based on the type of professional development that they engage in. And the more they engage in, the more learning they do, which benefits our school and our district and our students, the higher level that they receive from this organization. And I'm, you know, each year, we've had our board members, but I just wanted to recognize that Khadija has reached her Level 1, so congratulation. And then Maggie, Bridget, and Barb had got to recognition for a Level 2. And then Jennifer Deek has reached Level 3 recognition. So I just wanted to thank them for committing so much time because a lot of this is like online virtual sessions that they might attend. It's going to their state convention. It's going to, they were at a regional meeting last Thursday evening. They put a lot of time and effort to learn and to really support public education. So I just wanted to thank them for all of their commitment. And all of our board members at some point have received levels, so let's give them a round of applause.
Okay, moving on to item 7.2. The Holman Board of Education nominated four outstanding businesses that support our schools for the Wisconsin Association of School Boards Business Honor Roll. Tonight, we would like to recognize Steiger Steel and Fabricating, Rainbow Ridge Farm, Jones Grain Farm, and Y Child Watch from the Hauser YMCA. I will now ask board members to read the nominations for each of these businesses. Please come to the front of the room when your business is recognized, and thank you for all you do for our schools. So we are starting with Steiger Steel and Fabricating. Is that you, Maggie?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, if you wanted to kind of stand maybe right by the... Right by the table there and look this way. See, if we have camera, we want to make sure you become YouTube famous. Thank you. All right.
Perfect. We are proud to honor Steiger Steel and Fabricating for their meaningful role in Holman's Youth Apprenticeship Program. By offering real-world training in welding, fabrication, and manufacturing, Steiger provides students with the opportunity to explore careers in the trades while gaining critical hands-on experience. Apprentices work alongside skilled professionals and are introduced to industry standards, tools, and workplace expectations. Steiger Steel's support extends beyond mentorship, as they also participated in our Youth Apprenticeship Video Series, helping to highlight the value of skilled trade careers in our community. Their continued involvement plays a vital role in preparing students for successful futures in high-demand fields. Thank you.
Congratulations. And I think we have a current student with us this evening.
All right, one, two, three. Perfect. Can you stick around with a picture of all four people?
All right, next up is Rainbow Ridge Farms. Uh, Barb.
Rainbow Ridge Farms has been an invaluable partner in Holman's Youth Apprenticeship Program. This local, family-run farm offers students hands-on opportunities in sustainable agriculture, animal care, and farm operations. Apprentices learn responsibility, time management, and the importance of hard work while supporting the day-to-day care of animals and farm life. Rainbow Ridge Farms has created a welcoming and educational environment where students are empowered to explore agricultural careers. Their participation in our Youth Apprenticeship Video Series helped bring visibility to the importance of agriculture in our schools and community. We are grateful for their continued investment in student success.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next up is Jones Grain Farm.
Great.
I don't believe they're here this evening.
Okay.
But we'll still recognize them.
Jones Grain Farm has been a dedicated partner in providing Holman students with hands-on experience in farming through the Youth Apprenticeship Program. Students work alongside seasoned professionals to learn about planting, harvesting, equipment operation, and agribusiness management. This experience allows students to connect classroom knowledge to meaningful work in one of Wisconsin's foundational industries. Jones Grain Farm also contributed to our Youth Apprenticeship Video Series, helping to showcase the opportunities available in modern agriculture. Their mentorship and support provide students with the skills, confidence, and insight needed to pursue careers in the agricultural field. We thank them for their continued partnership.
And next is the Y Child Watch at Hauser YMCA.
The School District of Holman proudly recognizes Y Child Watch for its outstanding partnership through the Youth Apprenticeship Program. This site provides students with meaningful, hands-on experience of early childhood care, helping them develop strong communication skills, responsibility, and deep understanding of child development. The staff at Y Child Watch fosters a nurturing and professional environment where students are supported and mentored as they explore careers in education and childcare. Their enthusiastic participation in our Youth Apprenticeship Video Series also helps spotlight the essential role early learning environments play in shaping future educators. We are grateful for their continued commitment to student growth and career exploration. Thank you.
All right, one, two, three. You guys all want to get in once? It's the...
As a board?
Board members, yeah.
Why don't you get with them, board members?
Okay.
You're the one that recognized them. Yes, and we're just very appreciative for all you do for our students. It's great for them to get to see hands-on their career interests, so.
All right, ready? One, two, and three. Perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, next up is item 7.3. The Holman Board of Education is pleased to officially welcome all new staff members who have joined the district for the 2025-2026 school year. For those in attendance this evening, please come forward to the microphone right here at the front and introduce yourself, share a little bit about your background, and let us know what your role is in the district. So.
If you don't mind, you can come together, all of you. Come on up together. They all have very similar roles, so if you kind of want to do that together even. Thank you very much for taking time to come this evening. We just want to honor and thank you for all that you're doing, so.
I'm Ashley Miller. My background's primarily in mental health, and I'm a new Special Education Assistant at Sand Lake.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Amber Dayton. This is my first year doing special ed. The last five years, I've been doing high school math. I'm at the middle school.
Joshua Nelson. This is my seventh year in the career of education in various roles, and this is my first year as an official staff member at Holman Middle School as a Special Education Educational Assistant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He has a great job, by the way.
Hi, my name is Jeremy Kleinsmith. A little background, I graduated from Holman in 96. I've got a back, I got, I guess, a history in natural resources. I had a career for a while, 17 years with the Forest Service. And my family and I moved back last August, and now I am currently an Educational Assistant for the middle school. I get to see my son every day. He really loves it.
All right, thank you all for choosing the School District of Holman and for all that you do for our students and district. Do we want to get a picture of them as well?
Sure.
Travis Love.
Travis Love.
He went out to the band review.
Why don't you come up one more time by the table?
But Stacy will get a picture.
And we'll get a picture of you.
Yes, please, if you don't mind. They're like, are they okay with it?
We're surprised with public speaking and a photo.
And a photo. Lucky ducks. Lots of activities going on this evening to get to. Yeah. Oh, awesome.
All right.
Thank you so much for being over this evening.
Thank you for all that you do. Okay, and then I'm going to turn the remaining part of the recognition and thank yous back over to Dr. Mueller.
Yeah, just two other recognitions this evening. This week is National School Lunch Recognition Week. I always feel like there's another recognition, which is awesome. And we just want to thank our lunch program and our nutrition services staff for all they do to make sure our students are nourished and able to learn in that. And then also, next week is National School Bus Safety Week, so let's join in celebrating our drivers and our transportation department mechanics and all them that help get our students to school safe and ready to learn also. So if you see our nutrition service staff or our drivers, transportation department members in the next two weeks here, let's celebrate them and thank them, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on to reports and discussion. Item 8.1. I welcome the middle school and high school CTE team to present the CTE curriculum. This item is for informational purposes only and will not appear on a consent agenda.
All right, thank you for welcoming us to the board meeting tonight. We have three of us that are going to present on our self-study and curriculum development process, and many more in the audience to kind of support us here tonight, too, so that's super fun. All right, so tonight, we'll just go through some staff introductions, and then we'll cycle through the middle school and high school departments that all relate to CTE that we have here in the district. At our middle school, we have two departments, Technology Education and Business Education. So tonight, we have Nate Casey and Tiffany Peters, if they just want to wave, representing the middle school, and then Jeff Growth also teaches Technology Education at the middle school. For the high school, we expand a little bit more to offer some more specific opportunities for our students. In the Marketing and Business Department, we have Heather Bresky, myself, I'm Haley Hasselberg, and then Trevor Verden and Cameron Carey. And then for Agri-science and Technology Education, we have Jamie O'Neill, Danielle Lilla, Abe Regan, who's back in the...
Abe, I think.
Ryan Ziegler, Tim Baikberg, and then Jason Havel as well. And then Family and Consumer Education is represented by Danielle Baikberg. One of the things that we looked at when we went through our self-study was our mission statements for all the CTE areas. The nice thing about our areas, we're separate but also collaborative, so we're all really focused on preparing students for careers in the different areas, but also helping them to see and really be impactful consumers and contributing members of society. So as you can see in all of our mission statements, that's kind of the clear focus. We have a really dedicated team across all areas that really strive to make sure that our students have the skills that they can then go and do some of the youth apprenticeship opportunities, different work experiences, and hands-on opportunities for students to really grasp that information, knowledge, and then showcase their skills and prepare them for the future. Across the high school classes, we also are really proud to offer many opportunities for students in post-secondary avenues with transcribed credits. Most of our transcribed credits that you can see on the screen here are all offered through Western Technical College, and it allows students to gain that post-secondary knowledge and opportunity while they're still in high school, which is a big benefit to our students. And many of our students take multiple transcribed credit classes throughout their time in high school. The financial impact to this for our students is pretty vast. This information or this data is from 2022-2023, with 718 students earning transcribed credit that year, with a total of 2,909 credits earned. This is a great cost savings to our students because while they're in high school, they are able to earn these credits that would typically cost them about $138 to $186 per credit, depending on what course they would take. So for our students, it's a savings of over $440,000, but the cost to the district is $0 because Western does not charge us for those transcribed credits. We have a little bit more data dating back a few years. We haven't gotten the most recent data within the last couple of years available to us when we made this presentation. But the other thing about the financial impact to the district that our CTE area provides is technical incentive grant dollars that come back to the district when students participate in things like transcribed credit and maybe earn a certification, which we'll talk a little bit more about later, but other industry credentials that are offerings provide students to earn, so that is a benefit to the district as well. And then the last thing that we'll kind of share about transcribed credit and really why we partner with Western Technical College is they've been a great local partner for us, and we've seen that 21% of students that earn transcribed credit while they're in high school end up enrolling in Western in their first year, and then that number jumps to 25% within three years of graduation. So providing them that opportunity to experience things with Western, they come into our classes and share about their opportunities, is a great benefit to our students. And then we also see that once they're at Western, students that took a class in high school that was transcribed do well with their academics and then their continuation on, so they earn over a 3.0 GPA in their first year at Western, and then 50% of that continue on into their second year. So it's a great way for students to kind of get that leg up and have those opportunities while they're still in high school. I'm going to pass it over to Heather now, and she's going to share a little bit. We have it kind of broken up by our different departments now with what we found in our self-study.
All right, so one of the first things that we did with our self-study is we actually did a lot of site visits. We did surveys. We surveyed students and parents, went to other schools, used our universities, our local universities, reached out to them to really deep dive and look at our strengths and our challenges. And we're just going to go through and highlight a few of them. So at the middle school level, we looked at our course offerings. We offer business 6th through 8th grade, multiple offerings. There's two full-time business teachers. We also have a school store there, and they have three grade levels. There are Yolong classes, there are project-based classes, there's a progression, and there are full courses. Some of their challenges is aligning with the high school. We've been trying to work at that lately. We do a lot of partnership with our entrepreneurship lately, our school store, we try to get our students over into the middle school presenting, but just, we'd like to collaborate more, obviously, and build our program. These are the classes offered at the middle school. You can see the 6th, 7th, 8th grade classes, so getting them ready for the high school level. And then the high school business, things we learned, strengths, we have a lot of course offerings for our students. There's a progression. We also have a school-based enterprise, which is our school store. That's gold certified. Along with our being gold certified, we're partnered with the Maroon Mug, so we partner with the Special Education Department. We're really proud of that. We have our retail marketing class, which is actually an inclusion class, which both Haley and I have had the opportunity to teach alongside Sam Frame, and that's just a great opportunity for our kids to have a real-world experience. We have a strong student organization. Holman DECA is the largest DECA chapter in the state of Wisconsin. We have a traditional record of qualifying a lot of students for internationals, which we're very proud of. We have project-based learning opportunities for kids, such as the entrepreneurship store, our Dancing with the Sports Stars, and our Sports and Marketing class. We have a lot of partnerships with the business community. We rely heavily on our business community to come in, to help us to develop curriculum. We provide field trip experiences outside of the classroom, numerous guest presenters. We have local competitions. We've had students every year, we're really proud of this, win the Quick Trip Innovation Plan. We do Titan competitions, stock market competitions. We have a partnership with Ultra. Each year, they come in and work with our advanced marketing students through the course of three different months, and actually, the kids come over here, present their promotion, and then the actual promotion takes place at the high school during back-to-school registration. Some of our opportunities, of course, we're always looking to add more work-based learning opportunities for our kids in the school store. We're really trying to make that. We're open now between 7:00 and 7:30, all three lunches. We do have a lot of kids that are starting to work in there, actually apply, have jobs. We have school store managers now, so we're really trying to expand that. We're really trying to recruit other populations of students. Retail marketing was a really wonderful course for us to add, and it's been great for our students. It's been great for us. It's been great for the program. We're trying to obtain transcribed credit for our market research class. It's our only class in the marketing department that's not transcribed with Western. That's been kind of a challenge, but we're still working at that, and just do a better job promoting transcribed credit to kids and parents and showing them the value. And promote our courses in the middle school, and of course, align with the middle school. It's one of our opportunities. These are our course offerings, and anytime you see a TC next to them, those are transcribed credits. At the high school side, the left-hand side is the business. The right-hand side is the course that they receive for their Western credit. We also have certificates available to the students that take multiple classes, so they can get a customer service certificate for Marketing and Business Concepts and Retail, and a sales certificate for Marketing and Business Concepts, computer app, sports, and retail. All right, additional Marketing and Business classes offered, Market Research was another class, Web Design, Your Book. We also have the Finance Youth Apprenticeship and the Marketing Youth Apprenticeship Program.
My turn? Okay, my turn. So for our self-study, starting with the middle school tech ed program strengths of our middle school tech ed program that Jeff covers, one, just a well-equipped, traditional learning space. Through the most recent referendum, we're also seeing, and we'll get down to that on our opportunities, we're starting to see where we have some advanced manufacturing equipment coming into that space as well. Strong student engagement, very hands-on, very thorough teaching of the traditional skills, the woodworking, the blueprint reading, things along those lines. I can attest, being at the high school, that most of our students coming up, entering that freshman year, have mastered measurement, which is a big thing in tech ed, to be able to read to the near sixteenth of an inch and be able to retain that skill for those upper-level classes. Wide variety of tools, strong focus on attention to detail, problem-solving skills. As far as opportunities, we are also trying to do more alignment with the high school, collaboration with some high school projects, wanting to get more into that, some advanced manufacturing concepts, so looking for purchasing equipment for advanced manufacturing and integrate that in, and then offer an enrichment class down the road. As far as offerings, fairly straightforward, tech ed 6, tech ed 7, tech ed 8, right? High school, there's five of us that teach high school technology education, so we have many, many different course offerings, we'll get to in just a little bit. We do have a strong Skills USA program. Project-based learning is something that you'll hear a lot about in the CTE area. Tech ed is no different than that. We believe very strongly in learning to do. Transcribed credit opportunities, industry certs, Ryan's Advanced Automotive Students, for example, get their ASE certifications or the opportunity to. We've had good success with that. Progression of courses, courses build on each other. Full courses is a good thing. We have more students that want our courses than we have seats available, so it's good that we have the demand there. Field trip experiences, our connection with our local businesses. Our businesses have been great for us, helping us and helping our students out in those YA programs and just being a resource for us, and then guest speakers as well. Opportunities, we would love to get transcribed credit, to continue promoting that and find new ways that we can incorporate that in. Promoting courses at the middle school, so tying it in so middle school students have a better idea of what to expect at the high school. Currently, we are aligning our safety in some of that vocabulary, so when they come from the middle school to the high school, they have some recognition of what safety looks like, and it's not foreign, it's not something different. And then with the new course schedule that started last year at the high school, we realized very quickly that storage is an issue when we have twice as many classes meeting within a week. For example, I have a Woods, I teach the Woods program. I have four sections. That is 72 projects that are currently being built in that space. That's just a lot of material. And that's just one example of what we're experiencing at the high school now with the new schedule, something that we need to get creative with and work through. And then as far as offerings, obviously, we offer quite a bit. The spectrum from very traditional to advanced manufacturing all over the board. Level 3, Auto Service 2 is our Level 3. We like to incorporate youth apprenticeship, and then if we can't teach those advanced-level classes based on time and seat availability, we have that capstone option in tech ed for a student that really wants to advance in, but that course just isn't offered that semester, that year. High school egg science program, we're very lucky and blessed to have Jamie have joined us last year for egg science, teaching those courses. A lot of different classes that she teaches throughout the year, Level 1 all the way up to Level 2. And, oh, I'm sorry. One thing to notice, the TC is there for the transcribed credit, but also you'll notice the ES. So if you look at a class like Greenhouse 1, students that take that, they not only get the transcribed credit with Western, they also are meeting some science elective credits as well. So it's a great fit for those students that need the hands-on science, and we can offer that in our program. As far as strengths, again, wide variety of classes, very hands-on. The FFA has always been a strong club organization here at Holman High School. The SAE is a part of that FFA program, getting out, doing the field trips, collaborating. Guest speakers, when I walk past, there's always seems to be a guest speaker in our classroom, engaging those students and bringing the big world in, which is wonderful. And then the school-based enterprises with the greenhouse. As far as opportunities, expanding on those SAEs, those are student egg experience programs, job shadowing and internships. Worth mentioning, just the recruitment of diverse student populations. We want to see a larger mix, a greater increase. Sometimes certain classes are very male-dominated, some are very female-dominated. It'd be nice to see those balance out a little bit better. And then trying to find ways to bring egg reculture science into the middle school for early interest and building that early interest. And I will wear one more hat, if my wife will let me. The Family and Consumer Ed Program that Danielle works with here at Holman High School. Strengths of that program, it's just the assortment offerings that match with the student interest, support development of those basic life skills that all students need to know as they become adults. The child development is transcribed with Western. That's been very popular and helps those students get a kind of a kickstart in their college career. Opportunities for improvement. You can see, again, when we're looking at just diversity, if we look at child development, it's primarily very heavily female-populated. We'd love to see and find ways to bring more males into that area, ways that we can recruit. males into that area, ways that we can recruit, and then finding additional transcripted credit opportunities. And then we look at the courses, Foods One, Foods Two, and then Child Development and Parenting.
All right, we're going to end here tonight with a highlight of our CTSOs, which we thank all of you for supporting. This is where our kids really get to shine. They get to take everything they learn in the classroom and then apply it in our student organizations. And we're quite proud of all of our student organizations and everything that they do at Holman High School. So we just have some pictures of Skills USA. Kids are competing. If you want to say anything else, what they're doing?
Pictures of students competing and just doing that project-based learning.
One thing about our CTSOs and Skills is no different, is they have a lot of different varieties of competitions that they can participate in. So anywhere from job interview in Skills USA to some of the more technical advanced manufacturing and woodworking opportunities.
Right. And I just, I had a conversation today with a student. When they think skills, sometimes they think welding, they think automotive, but they forget about photography in media production. It's quite the gamut of skills that they can learn.
Just some Decca pictures. One thing that we're proud of, of all our CTSOs too, not only are they do competitions, social activities, but we do a lot of community service in all of our organizations and raise a lot of money for the community, so we're very proud of that also.
Should have gone back into the archives and maybe found a picture of Khadija competing in Decca.
I think you would have been in some of those pictures too, Haley.
She is a former competitor.
And then, of course, our FFA, they do some wonderful opportunities, not only with their competitions, they have many different levels, but just community service is a cornerstone of all of our different CTSOs, bringing Ag Day to the community for younger students to experience and learn about agriculture and get excited for maybe being in FFA one day themselves.
And then we'll just, this is our last slide, we'll just end with a lot of our classes we talked about and highlighted, business partners, outside activities, outside the classroom learning opportunities. This is just one example of a sports entertainment marketing class. Each year, we do a field trip to Camp Randall in the Cool Center, and they go on professional tours and get to learn about those venues and how they operate for the kids that are interested in sports entertainment marketing.
So we just thank you for the opportunity to present and your ongoing support of all of our different areas. As you can see, we have a lot going on, and we are very busy, but we really love to provide these opportunities for students and have your support behind us. So if you have any questions?
Yeah, we enjoy having you here, too. All right, any questions?
I just have one about the, you talked about the certifications for, I believe it was like customer service and something, are those like nationally recognized certifications?
So those are through Western, so what happens is when students take both classes, then Lindsay Seif actually registers them, and then they get the certificate through Western. So yes, they are national certificates, but that is through Western that they can earn those, so.
And there are other national certifications in all of our areas, some that we have yet to explore, but Tim shared about the ASE certifications for automotive, so those are additionally areas that we want to explore and maybe bring in some more technical incentive grant dollars to the district.
Awesome. All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
I was just curious, as you did your self-study with like rapid emergence of AI, if that came up in any of your areas, or if you've had to make changes as a result of new technologies?
Definitely is a hot topic right now in all of our areas. Heather and I are going to a conference this week, and I know they have that on the agenda as well. So we even, in the summer, go to a transcripted credit summit at Western, and they talked a little bit about it, and just kind of strategies for how different disciplines and teachers can kind of use it to the advantage, but then also recognize that students obviously still need to show their own skills in it. In all of our jobs and opportunities for students, AI is definitely becoming more prevalent, so it's just figuring out, okay, how do you balance showing them and exposing them to those, but then also having them learn the skills as well? I don't know if anyone has any other?
Awesome.
Yeah, our new standards do not have AI, and Haley and I got the opportunity to be on the committee to write the marketing ad standards, and they are not AI-driven. However, that's been a hot topic at all of our conferences, and even some of the schools were looking at scoring rubrics, like how to train the students, like when it's appropriate to you is AI, and how much you can use it, and what for, because obviously around the state, that has been an issue, so.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank you guys. This is a wonderful presentation that you do, and you get to see, so throughout the whole thing, I just kept thinking, there's so many opportunities. There's so many opportunities, just way more than I ever had, I feel like. But then the question kind of in the back of my head was, or did I just not know about all the opportunities? And maybe there was more that existed than I realized back when I was in school. So wondering, how do you ensure that all students know about all of the opportunities and find the right fit for them?
One of the things that we've noticed within the last couple of years, to the credit of our Student Services Department, is they do a nice job helping students really plan out their four years and exposing them to those opportunities. Some of our departments and teachers or students have been able to go to the middle school even when they're starting that freshman year, to really let them see what all of the different opportunities are. I think Travis Udell has also done a great job of showcasing through his videos and photos, all of the opportunities that allow parents to see what's offered, because a lot of times they have an influence in their students' decisions of what they might want to try to. But the nice thing I've noticed with all of our CTE areas is we have a lot of overlap of students from marketing to tech ed to business, so they are learning all the skills and kind of weaving them into all of our different offerings, so that's great, too.
And I think our middle school does a great job of promoting and trying to get students into the next level of all our programs, too, so encouraging them to take classes, so.
Yeah, that's good, thank you. Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Great, moving on to item 8.2, Title I Teacher Shannon Kret and Interventionist Beth Miller will now present the Annual ESSA Title I Report. This item is for informational purposes only and will not appear on a consent agenda.
Well, and actually, it's just Shannon with me this evening now, here to help me with our ESSA, our Every Student Exceeds Act review, so this is a look back primarily on our Title I program from last year. Just as a reminder, the main goal of ESSA is really to provide or ensure really that equity and opportunity for all of our students. It is a federal program that provides funding and a level of accountability to ensure that we are supporting students most at risk of falling behind. So in the School District of Holman, that primarily means a focus on support in reading and math. So Title I is just one of the ESSA programs. The other titles fall under here as well, but in Title I, we're specifically looking at, again, the support of reading and math. We usually do that through kind of a blended report, blended approach, rather. We look at supporting through universal instruction. I think Shannon will probably talk a little bit about that. We also are always up on the most research-based interventions. We supply or provide a lot of interventions for our students in a variety of different environments. We do a lot with engagement and collaboration with our families, so collaborating and on how to problem-solve and support students in the best way, and collaborating with classroom teachers on how to partner. Also, working on providing that safe and nurturing safe space for students to take those educational risks, particularly when sometimes that can be a little challenging for kids. And then always making sure that we're up on the best practices through lots of PD opportunities. Back in 2019, 2020, we were awarded school-wide Title I program status, meaning that the entire building gets to be recognized as Title I, meaning that all students and all staff are able to access anything in terms of support of Title I. So through there, there are three things that have to happen. That's a comprehensive needs assessment, the comprehensive school-wide program, the regular evaluation revision, which what is great about this is this just naturally is folded into our continuous improvement process here in the School District of Holman, so it's really a seamless kind of process for us. So on top of a strong universal program that all of our, all of our buildings have across the district, we also have an additional layer of support with all of our buildings have an academic interventionist, and then we had three buildings last year that also qualified for Title I, which gave them another level of, well, actually more teachers. So they work pretty seamlessly with our academic interventionists. So Evergreen, Sand Lake, and Viking all qualified last year and did receive the additional funds to support those teachers. Good news, bad news. This year, our, the good news is that our community is a little more affluent, and so as a result, unfortunately, we lost a good portion of our Title I funding, and only two of our buildings this year qualify for Title I service. So next year, when I do this, we'll be talking specifically about Sand Lake and Viking because Evergreen was above the threshold for receiving those services. And then I will turn it over to Shannon to talk about the program that she and Beth support over at Viking.
Yes, so this, you probably have seen me for different buildings before. I do a lot of bouncing around. I had the opportunity to go to Viking, this is my second time at Viking, actually. Just, it's been nice getting back into the building. It's changed a little bit since I've been there, but Beth and I have really had to do a lot of collaborating this year. One thing that is always challenging in our field is the scheduling. We really want to make sure we're getting those interventions in for all our kids that need it, and we've had to get very creative a little bit, but we, and we've had data meetings, which the data meetings, they're much more student need-focused than they probably were some years ago, but I feel like our teachers, too, were really looking at what the child's area of need is more to in reading, and then Beth and I just making sure we're grouping the students appropriately. This year, I also have the opportunity, based on scheduling, to do some classroom help as well, where we kind of go into the classroom and can also support some of those students. It's been great for me. I have not been in the classroom for quite a while, so it's been kind of nice to see the students in that environment. With our parents, too, we're getting more reaching out from parents, I would say, than some years, just asking what they can do with their child at home to support their reading, and just having that with our families, giving them strategies that they can do quickly and easily at home. This year, being my first year there, for our family involvement, we're always sending materials home. A lot of our programs actually have little books and materials that you can send home for children, just so they can continue practicing, and just giving those ideas to families. Sometimes we give them really short little ideas, because I think some parents, it's overwhelming, because they're not educators themselves, so sometimes I think they think that there's more to it, and just putting them at ease that they can do short little activities to help their child. This year, we are going to try to do a breakfast and books parent involvement, where it's going to be about three times this year. It's kind of a partnership with nutritional services and our LMC staff, where the parents and families are going to come in and they can have breakfast, and then head up to the LMC, and there'll be some books and prizes and family events, which we're hoping with the three different times, we can hopefully reach more families, because sometimes when we do it on one night or something, it doesn't work for everybody. So we're hoping three different dates will give us a chance to get more people involved.
And then finally, we have a proportional share that goes to our private school partners. So we have students who reside in the School District of Holman who attend some of our private schools, so we partner with St. Paul's Lutheran School, St. Patrick's School, and Great River Montessori. So they, actually Jill does as well, where we collaborate and provide services for them as well. Any questions?
Okay, any questions?
So I'm curious about the change in status for Evergreen and how those changes happen, and I was just curious if it had anything to do with the, like redrawing up the boundaries, or if there was some other factor?
No, it's actually, so it's, the title funding is a pretty complicated beast. So it looks at SAPE data, so surrounding, actually residential population in general. So that is what caused our area, because it was a little more affluent, to drop down. That happened, I think, three or four years ago, too. We lost about 50% of our Title I funding. Then what happened is that based on last year's, we always lag a year on how the funding works in terms of setting it up, but it's always based on the average of our free and reduced lunch data for the district. So the, across all the buildings, this is the bar. This year, Evergreen just hit a little above it. So we are fortunate, though, in that all of our buildings do have academic interventionists as well that fill that gap for us. That was my next question. Very good.
Is there a concern, based on the fact that our Department of Education at the federal level is being gutted to a certain extent? I believe, I read somewhere, that we got funding for Title I upfront, and that the state is agreeing to continue funding our districts, but like, what is the plan if?
Something that we are watching very closely and having a lot of conversations about. I think we're probably going to have to have a Plan A, B, and C.
And do we, so you mentioned that school-wide status, is that like one layer of funding that we get, and then we get, it's just?
No, so it's, so there's targeted assistance, which means you have to pre-test and post-test students, and you can only touch and apply funds to those students during that time, and we keep a list of, kind of, it's an exclusive list of who receives the service, and any of like, resources that are about the title fund money can only be used with those students. When you achieve a school-wide status, it allows you to be more fluid, and anybody can access that.
Okay, thank you. That's like with our family, too. When we were targeted, we could only invite those students and families, and this, I think for our families, I see all sorts when I've had these things, which is very nice, because it's open to everybody, which I think is a benefit, actually, compared to how it used to be with that.
It really makes it an easier flow as part of the overall MTS system for supporting students.
Okay, nice.
Good question.
Any other questions?
I have one, sorry. Can you remind me, with the private school proportional share, do they, are they also impacted by like the SAPE? Okay, so they also get reduced funding when a community is more affluent?
So what happens is our district gets a pot of money based on the enrollment in the whole area, which they're considered part of, and then their enrollment drives how much, based on how many our resident students who reside in what would receive Title I funding schools goes to that building.
Okay.
So St. Paul's will look different than St. Pat's will look different than Great River Montessori, because they have students from different schools.
And it's the individual student?
That pulls the allotment, not necessarily the support, but the allotment of funds.
Okay, but then the support could be for any student in those schools?
So that gets a little more complicated. So that we have a memorandum with the School District on Alaska, because that's where the primary, most of the students go, and we have kind of a, it's more than a cordial agreement, it's actually drafted-up agreement that we are okay with them being fluid with our funds, their funds, regardless of which district they reside on, those students who need help get support, regardless if it's a dollar from Holman or a dollar from on Alaska.
Okay. Yeah, I think ultimately my question, and the thing that comes up in conversations, like Bridget asked about, is like, what happens if these federal dollars go away? And I think there's an assumption in the people that I know that this only impacts public schools.
Oh, no.
And so, yeah, that's just something that I wanted to have straight in my brain, so thank you.
Nope, it impacts all of us. Good question.
All right, anything else? Okay, thank you. Moving on to item 8.3, Executive Director of Instructional Services Kim Edwards will present the Wisconsin State Assessment Systems Report.
Okay, so it's time to present our 2425 Wisconsin Student Assessment System results. These are results of our state assessments that took place last spring. They finally just became publicly reportable, so I'm excited to share them with you. So it does provide some valuable insights, just in terms of how our students are performing academically. It also shows how we're in alignment with our state and our federal requirements, and then it also is a nice kind of a health check in terms of how are our systems going in terms of alignment of our curriculum, our resources, our instruction, and our internal assessment. So we'll be looking at each of the assessments across buildings and grade levels, how they, how we performed according to our, our own students' performance compared to the average of our peer districts, and then also the state as well. So this is something that appears on our dashboard, our strategic plans, so we have a few measures directly measured on there. The first two come from Wisconsin forward, so those are our third through eighth grade.
The first two come from Wisconsin Forward, so those are our third through eighth graders and ELA in math. And then we have the ACT suite. So we'll have ACT or Pre-ACT Secure, which is 910, and then ACT at 11. So it is just one measure, but it does help us really, as I said, check the health of our system and make sure that we are preparing students really to be college career next step after-school ready. And it also helps us not only celebrate things that we're really doing well, but it gives us some pain points on areas that we can do better. So it is part of our school improvement planning. Every, not only do we look at this at a district level, but our buildings will be digging into this data as well. Every school is using it to refine their improvement plan and ensure that we're continuing to focus on student growth and achievement. And again, to make sure that our systems are in alignment. So the Wisconsin State Assessment System is made up of really three assessments. So the first, again, is that Wisconsin Forward exam. They dice up the grade levels a little interestingly, not a change over last year, but still always something that to be reminded of. ELA in math will be every grade in grades three through eight. But in social studies, we kind of just do a dipstick in fourth, eighth, and tenth. And then they also cover science in fourth and eighth, because if you look at the ACT suite, you're going to see that up in high school. We also have the Dynamic Learning Maps. This is for a small percentage of our students, where these state assessments would not be appropriate. And that's something that's determined at an IAPT meeting. Again, at high school, we're taking a look at the ACT suite. So we're going to dive a little deeper into each one of those. So as I said, all of our next slides, really, we're going to be comparing our performance to our similar districts, our peer districts across the state. We're going to take a look at the average state performance as well as ours. Holman, you can see, is designated by the diamond in red. Our peer average is the square in blue. And the state average will be triangles in green. Across the bottom, you will see the last five years' worth of data for each of our peer districts, and then graphed up on the top here. So you will notice that we do have a slight dip in our ELA performance. This does coincide with the implementation of new resources across our elementary and grade six. So as with any new adoption, there are a little, there's an adjustment period. So we are already seeing some great standards alignment and our internal data is looking really good. So we're anticipating that this is going to stabilize and pick back up here again pretty quickly. But again, even though we dipped, we're still above the state average, so. I'm sorry, the peer district average. When we take a look at math, we're again, again, continuing to really show some nice growth in math. Overall, we're continuing to close that gap between our peers, but we're falling just a little bit short of them. But I mean, very, very tight there, as you can see, consistently significantly outperforming the state as well. In science, you'll see we have a slight dip. It's actually less pronounced than our, the average of our peer districts perform. But regardless, again, this year, we continue to outperform our peers, but it's very, very close there, as you'll see. When we look at social studies, again, this is four, eight, and 10. Last year, you'll notice we had a pretty significant spike in the data. If you look at this year, it's actually a little bit more consistent, where we were trending beforehand. If you look at our five-year worth of data, we're still looking pretty, pretty good there, really pretty close to where our peer districts have performed. But that's something that we're going to want to continue to watch. Okay, this, these tables are a breakdown of our subgroup performance by race and ethnicity, as well as their socioeconomic status. So you see, you know, on the second, this column right in here, you'll see this is the makeup of our school district of Holman demographics. So you'll see roughly about the, not roughly, it is the percentage. Each subgroup makes up of our district whole. The red, the red font indicates a slight dip in performance over last year. The green shows a slight increase. You'll notice that the heavy red area tends to be ELA. Since we had a dip in ELA overall, it's not surprising that our subgroups would dip as well. Again, an area that we're always continuing to watch and monitor, but are confident that that is an area that's going to continue to improve as we really master our new resources and all the work that we're doing, not only through Act 20, but with the new resources as well. This slide outlines data for our students with and without disabilities. And it also shows performance of our multilingual students. Again, you'll see ELA is a pain point, yeah. Also, math for students with disabilities is an area to take a peek at. You'll see that we also have the percentage of these. It's just formatted a little bit differently. Our students with disabilities, about 16.2% of our population, and our ML students is 3.8%. And that takes us into Pre-ACT Secure. This is all our ninth and 10th grade students, with the exception of our population who takes the DLM. This is going to be five different subs tests. We'll look at English and reading, that's going to be combined as an ELA score. They also have writing as a component of that, math and science. So really exciting things happening when we look at ELA with our ninth and 10th graders. Not only did we surpass the peer average again, we are continuing to widening the gap from where we were with them, achieving a 58.4% of our students meeting and advanced in terms of the standards in ELA. When we look at math, we're continuing to make that solid growth. While we are lagging just a touch behind the average of our peers, we are trending in upward direction, which is really good to see. Just like we saw in Forward, our science across the board has taken a dip with the peers, the state, all of us. And so again, here, we see that slight decline. But despite that, we're still continuing to outperform the peer group and significantly outperform the state. So while we all dipped some, it seems a little bit less significant for us. And again, here is the breakdown for our ninth and 10th grade with our Pre-ACT Secure in terms of race and ethnicity subgroups, and then our socioeconomic status. You'll see, we are going to want to take a look at two, well, how we're serving our students for our Asian, both in ELA and math, and then a slight dip for economically disadvantaged students in ELA as well. Other than that, all of our other subgroups showed a little bit of improvement there in terms of their percent meeting and advanced on the assessment. And then again, broken down by our students with and without disabilities, and then our English, our students who are English proficient versus our students who are multilingual. So yeah, need to take a peek at our students with disabilities there, but overall, improvements in all subgroups there. And that takes us into our ACT. This is for, these are our 11th grade students, except those who took the DLM. This again has five subtests, so we'll dig into each of those. So this year, we really are showing great, great improvements here, all across the high school, really. So not only did we outperform the average composite of our, I'm sorry, the average of our, average ELA score of all of our peers, we're significantly above the state average as well, with us scoring at a 60.4% of our students meeting or exceeding, or meeting, I'm sorry, they've changed the language on this, meeting or advanced on the state assessment here. And interesting, a very similar data line when we look at math as well. Again, we, last year, we're lagging a little bit behind the average of the peers. This year, leapt ahead of them by several percentage points. So nice, nice growth in, for our 11th graders last year with math as well. ACT, science has an incredible trend line here when we look at how we performed in terms of science. Like, we have been doing a steady upward climb for the last several, several years. This year, shooting way ahead of the peer group and like 20, 21 points above the state, which is exceptional. So that's very, very exciting as well. The only area we tested in science where we were continuing to go up. And then, super exciting. So for the first time ever, not only have we exceeded the average, the composite, so the composite score is the culmination of all the different subtests. Not only is this the first time that we have ever exceeded the average of our peers, it is the first time we have met our dashboard goal of reaching a 21 as an average composite score. So huge celebrations there in terms of our ACT data. When we look at our breakdown by race, ethnicity, and our socioeconomic status, you'll see a lot of green there as well. I do want to point out that we have one subgroup, which is in black. That is because we did not have data last year, most likely because we did not have a cell size or enough students really that generated a score for us. We do have one area that went down in math. Our students as two or more races is one that we're going to take a look at. But overall, really, really nice growth and improvement, not only overall, but for our subgroups as well. And that also translates over into performance for our students with disabilities and our multilingual students. With our students with disabilities, this slight drop there that we have to take a look at. And then our average composite score for our students who are multilingual went down just a bit. So lots of things to celebrate here. So in grades three through eight, so taking a look at our Forward data, we have nice increased proficiency in math. That's been a nice steady trend up forward. The next one, it should be all subtests. We were performing close to or above the average of the peers, which is great to see. And we have some modest gains for our subgroup performance in math, some areas that we need to look at as well. In our Pre-ACT Secure, those are our ninth and 10th grade. Huge improvements in proficiency for ELA in math. And most of our subgroups did show increased levels of proficiency in ELA in math as well. In ACT, grade 11, huge celebrations here. It's our highest rate of proficiency in all of our areas. We hit that goal of 21 on our composite. And we have gains in proficiency for almost all of our subgroups in ELA math. But there, where, as I said, still some opportunities for improvement. We're continuing to work on that core academics for all students. As I've mentioned, like, we are, we are working on that implementation of the new ELA resource. That's a, that's a big shift for us. And everybody's doing a light, a nice job in really embracing that transition. So good things are going to come from that. And then always improving access and performance, and performance toward grade level standards for all of our students is always a goal for us. Lots of things we're doing across the district to support that work. So we have our district screeners. AmesWeb Plus is the one that was introduced last year. It's the required one by the state in grades K4 to 3. We've also expanded that as our screener through fifth grade, just to have some alignment and systems and have some common data sets to discuss. We also have our Eye Ready, K8, then in math. And then our middle school uses that as well. And then Pre-ACT, we have a practice that we use in the high school. Again, continuing to refine that implementation of the ELA resource. Very excited that we continue to have the support of our Read Core with Wisconsin Reading Core tutors in all of our elementary buildings, which has been really fabulous support. And then exciting things happening in math. So this year, we are piloting a new math resource, A Luster of Mathematics 360 in K5. And our high school, Algebra 1 and Geometry, is adopting the HMAGA. So talk about a lot of acronyms, but it stands for Algebra, Geometry, Algebra. So that will be coming in at the high school. As always, we have the continued instructional support of PD and then our district coaching programs out there supporting everyone. We have our district literacy and math coaches, as well as an inclusion coach. And then we are continuing our partnership with CISA this year in supporting our multilingual program. This year, we're also doing an increased emphasis on our district-level strategic implementation guide. And that's really a tool that our instructional leaders, as well as our guiding coalitions within each building, will be using really to strengthen, continue to strengthen and grow our PLC practices, our culture, and really ensure that we have great practices in place to ensure that we are doing all that we're able to improve outcomes for all of our students. Any questions?
All right, any questions?
So one thing that I noticed with all of the graphs is they go to 2020, which I thought was a very interesting cutoff. But if we were to expand the graph out, would you say that we were experiencing more of like a dip because of the COVID-19 pandemic? And then now we've kind of hit this trajectory of getting back to some kind of normal? Or have we slowly been progressing over that time?
There's a couple of things that happened.
Sure.
So we had, back then, we also had a different peer group. And we were consistently pretty out, aside from a couple. We were very much at the top of that peer group. So this is nice because we have a few new districts that we can learn things from to really try and improve things, that we can tap into their resources. The other thing is, for one year, we did not have Wisconsin Forward data, because schools shut down before we had a chance to administer. So there was a gap in the data. Then you have had, as is our history, we've shifted assessment systems repeatedly. So there was Aspire, there was Pre-ACT, there was, and then you shifted some benchmarks as well. So that also plays into the jumpiness in some of the data, particularly, I think it was two years ago, when they changed the benchmarks. So there's a lot of volatility in that. But I would say, because we're looking at five years, you get a good look at the trends. But again, I would just remind everybody, it's one, it's one big piece of data, but it's one piece of data and a whole body of evidence that we use to make our decisions.
Thanks. Any other questions?
I just wanted to comment, so I appreciate all the work that's been done. And I think the scores look really awesome. But I did just a quick comparison of like the steps for improvement from last year to this year. And I just had a question about, I know last year, there was kind of outlined more work around leadership development related to inclusion work and SEL. And I saw that that was not part of the steps for improvement this year. So just curious on that status.
Some of that has been embedded into the work of the SIG. So that's being picked up by the guiding coalitions and the instructional leaders. So some of the things that we identified as areas of needing to support and continue to grow and improve have been layered in as expectations within that measurement tool. So that's kind of where that fell into. We are continuing the work with CISA for our ML population. But again, there's always more work that we can do with all of our students, so.
And we have the One Inclusion Coach, right? Because I remember you talking about that last year. I would love at some point to just get a better understanding of kind of how all this fits together. Because I mean, you presented on Title I, and I can see how that fits in to this work as well. So I don't know if it would be a board workshop or another presentation towards the end of the year. But, and I love everything that you do. I just like, sometimes it's hard for me to...
There's a lot of different pieces.
Yeah, to understand how it all fits together, to make sure we're meeting all of those needs. But thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, any other questions?
I think that's a great idea, first of all, just like kind of a theme of like, what are we, what do we do to close gaps? And it does feel like there's many different options, right? The other thing I was just going to ask about, so with the new reading, with the new ELA curriculum, did they change, so besides AmesWeb, did they change the test? Or did they, we had the benchmark change a couple of years ago. But did, did the tool for third through eighth grade also change when that happened?
So for AmesWeb, for that piece in particular, or?
No, so AmesWeb, you said was new.
Last year, last year, we just did it in, well, it started at K through 3. This year, we expanded it through fifth grade. So our elementary, in terms of ELA, was on a consistent assessment system for screening. It did change, though, because over the summer, they did a renorming, which dramatically changed the percentage of our students who qualified for Act 20, so to speak. So the percentage of students that we had qualifying under the 25th percentile per Act 20 had been like 30, 33%, now is dramatically less.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Okay, thank you. And you can stay right there. Take a drink.
Thank you.
Item 8.4, Kim Edwards will continue with the Early Education Credit Program and the Start College Now request.
Yeah, speaking of how this all fits together, right? So, okay, so this is our early college credit program, Start College Now, tied in to a lot of the work that our CTE program, Lindsay Saip, who was here earlier, works with as well. But our applications for the spring semester, primarily those students who are going into classes at Western, so not on campus with us, but are actually going to another campus, either at Western or UWL by and large. Those applications were due October 1st. So Lindsay, our ACP counselor, and then our high school... So Lindsay, our ACP counselor, and then our high school principal, Mr. Sackett, are going through all those applications. We currently have 31 students who've applied for 50 different courses at Western Technical Colleges and College, and seven students who've applied for 14 courses at UWL. As I said, they're reviewing those applications right now. They'll have those final course numbers and acceptance pieces for our side of the work on that coming up here, because registration for that at the post-secondary places is in December. So, but wanted you all to know where we're at in terms of numbers and requests. So it'll be a much smaller number that actually gets approved to go on.
Okay, any questions on that? Okay, thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item 8.5. Dr. Mueller will present the resolution for modification of school start date for the 2026, 2027 school year. This item will appear on the October 27th consent agenda. And that last item that Kim presented will also appear on the October 27th consent agenda.
All right, I figure I'll wrap it up with the last presentation and give Kim a break. So in the past, we had done a resolution for a waiver we could get. One of the reasons for a waiver for a start date was with construction was one of the things. So we started school early this past year due to construction timelines and so forth. What I'm bringing before you is a resolution, a recommendation for a resolution to requesting approval to begin the 26, 27 school year as early as August 24th. The reasoning behind this is you are also allowed to have a modification to your start date of school based upon your transportation that you're providing to private schools. So we actually currently provide transportation to four different private schools. Luther, St. Patrick, St. Paul's, Greater River Montessori are the ones that are eligible for this. So what that means is their school start dates are earlier than our September 1st start date. So we actually have staff coming in, transporting kids, doing the work. So we are allowed to request to better align the start dates, ours with theirs, to provide more efficiencies, more flexibility, and reduce some transportation costs in places by aligning this better. So this would allow us those flexibilities. How this works is as a school board, if you bring this resolution forward, then we submit this to the DPI for approval. And then that allows us to build a calendar with a start date at the earliest August 24th or after that, but before September 1st. So that's what I'm bringing before you. Just wondering if there's any questions.
Any questions?
I'm trying to think about a phrase. Okay, would this be something that we would have to go out to waiver for every year? Or is this a specific instance where like the, the private schools happen to be starting earlier this coming year?
So the private schools have traditionally started earlier-
Sure.
-each summer. But as far as the process for the Department of Public Instruction, each year we would have to bring a resolution forward to be approved to get a waiver from the DPI. So it is a, it would be a yearly, so you couldn't do the like calendars two years out. You'd have to do a yearly calendar, which we have been doing the past few years.
Are other local schools starting somewhere?
Yeah, actually, La Crosse is starting, I want to say August 20th this next school year. And I do know Onalaska had brought the, a resolution forward at their last board meeting for starting the week of August 24th, and also West Salem is. So another reason is alignment of this. We have a lot of families in our area and we have a lot of shared staffing and a lot of shared resources. So that's where that flexibility comes in. And when you think of it, sometimes we're providing services also to our private schools and other categories besides transportation. So it just helps better align those services that have to be provided with their scheduled timelines also. Other things to think about is we do have, so we have a required amount of minutes every year to provide our students in that. As September 1st becomes a later date, then we go later into June in our calendars also. I have gotten some just random feedback from certain parents that having June more available than last week in August is preferable, just from informal conversations is other things that have come up. But really, the main reason is around the transportation and just providing flexibility. We have drivers come, you know, as you know, drivers has been a tough position to fill. And you have drivers coming in to just do a run for private school students, and then that's all they're doing for weeks. Like to be able to provide them actual routes of ours along with that will better retain our staffing and help us build flexibility and efficiencies in that is just another area of need that we have that would be helpful for us, so.
Yeah, I can say as someone who works in the La Crosse School District, I can, I can absolutely say that it has been a great fit for all the reasons you stated. And I think additionally, the flexibility in building in some extra days off during the school year by starting a little earlier has really helped from an academic standpoint as well.
Can you remind me, we did a, like a parent survey a couple of years back about the calendar? Did that have, did that have a preference for a start date? Or did we not ask about that?
We didn't really ask about our own start date because there wasn't much flexibility around that. What we asked more of was, did you want a full spring break? Or did you want-
Early release days, I think.
Those types of questions, correct. Which we've, we've tried to work some of that feedback into current calendars that we've been creating.
The, I have a couple of questions, sorry, I have a lot of questions tonight. Do we have an idea of how, what the dollars saved are? I just think when we communicate it out, I know there are subsets of the community that will not like this. As a parent, I think it's great. But I'm wondering if like, if we can estimate the dollars saved and use that as part of telling the story about the why, in addition to aligning with the other districts as, as part of our decision making.
I mean, I don't have the exact dollar amount, but we could definitely figure out an estimate as to how that would be helpful. I think as much as it, I think it's as much of when we have a driver driving a bus and they're picking up a few kids for private school, now they can actually stop and pick up other students that we're transporting, so they aren't running multiple routes or needing extra drivers. So it's really hard to estimate an exact amount to that. So I don't know how we will, I'd be hesitant to do that because that can change quite a bit depending on the number of students each year accessing it through private school. And I mean, we, we are actually making, like saying, we need you to drop your child off at festivals so that we can even just pick them up and get them to schools. And then they have certain times that they want their children to school. When we're trying to run our own routes, which we're having difficulties getting our own routes run on time. So that's where it brings that flexibility in efficiencies to work their, those routes in with ours better. So we aren't driving a large school bus with, you know, four kids going to one school one day and then maybe another day, you know.
How does this, how does this work for employee contract hours? I think like, starting next year, but it's not by a year, correct? Because, because teachers would be working further into the summer this year and then starting earlier in the summer. So they would be working more-
The contract days don't change. Everything else stays consistent. It just, they're just shifted. So actually, we started around the same time this school year. We started early this school year-
Sure.
-as to why we are done at the end of May due to our construction timelines. So you still have the same contracted days and hours, no matter if you start earlier or later, because that's how you build your calendar. What it does is it helps us provide services for our students while we're required to provide it for other students that are starting at an earlier time.
Is there any reason why DPI would deny our request for a waiver for this purpose?
The, what I'm hearing, the majority of the requests are being accepted to help with, because they know our fiscal challenges that we're having in many of our districts. And it just helps really with the flexibility and efficiencies.
This is like chicken and egg maybe, because I know we obviously have to approve it before anything is communicated. But if it was approved on consent at our next meeting, how, what would be the communication rollout plan for families? It's like, would we tell them soon?
Well, we, we would have, we first would need to get this approved, so this is how, sorry, I should go through this, the process. Thank you, Maggie. So the board would, if, say the board approves this, and it would be at our October 27th board meeting. Then after that, then we can submit our waiver request to the DPI. Once, say they approve our waiver, then we develop our calendar, which then needs to be board approved. So what it does is it gives us flexibility in developing our calendar for the 26, 27 school year.
Okay, that's helpful.
How often do you ask for feedback from teachers as far as their preferences with, just curious if teachers have had a chance to weigh in on, because I've had teachers tell me that they would like this, but I was kind of curious, like the broader-
We, we have survey every year that teachers set, a satisfaction survey that our, all of our staff fill out each year. And they provide comments, all different types of comments on there. So we are able to hear what type of feedback. And they also give a lot of informal feedback to their supervisors that, that bring it forward to our leadership team meetings and so on. So we've heard a lot of feedback that starting this year when we did has been helpful. We hear feedback like, starting the school year where you have, where we had like a, kind of a rolling start, where you had like not a full week of school right away. And to get the kids adjusted like in a slower manner has been helpful, especially the littles, you know, because going, coming to school for a kindergartner for five days the first week of school can be, you know, much for them sometimes with that adjustment. So we, we take that feedback in just informally and through the staff survey each year and so forth. Every so many years, we'll put out a survey. We have a calendar committee and they many times put out surveys to the staff to get input. And we do, and with our families, every so many years, just to see how, how are, how is it going for you? Because we have to remember our families are our customers and that also, not just our staff, so.
All right. Everyone good? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background materials on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. Would any board member like to pull an item out of the consent agenda to be discussed and/or voted on separately? I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided. Motion by Chris.
Second.
Second by Lindsay. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. All right, moving on to the board debrief. I will call upon board members and ask you to present any comments or committee reports you have. And tonight, we start with Lindsay.
Yeah, just congrats to everybody that received awards this evening and for everyone else who's helpful in the district. And also want to share that I went to the Wasby Regional Meeting this last week with some board members. So it's always fun to get together outside of the meetings and just to kind of hear what other districts are doing. And it's always reassuring because you hear how much, you know, everything that they're sharing, you think, oh, we already do that, or, you know, different things like that. So I think Jennifer might be sharing some more as well this evening, but it was really enjoyable evening. Thanks.
Maggie.
Yeah, congratulations to all the businesses honored tonight. And just a thank you to presenters and a welcome to new, new staff.
Okay, Bridgette.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, you know, definitely a recurring theme tonight with the fiscal challenges that our school districts are facing. And so anyone listening, I hope they're advocating with their legislators and really talking about these really important issues. And definitely appreciate the hard work that our district staff and, and all of our teachers do in this community.
Okay, Barb?
I echo what Lindsay said about the regional Wasby meeting. I found myself saying the same thing. Oh, we already do that, so it's always good to know. Finance committee met tonight. We reviewed what was done last year in regards to the referendum. We reviewed our outstanding debt and we discussed a few options to consider for the 2026 referendum.
Okay, Khadija.
I echo what everyone else has said, and I just want to particularly shout out our meeting our composite score dashboard metric. That's really awesome. It's, we don't, I mean, the dashboard can seem intimidating at times, but when we meet something, it's, it feels really good. So I'm like, I was excited to hear that tonight.
All right, Chris.
Yeah, so a lot of positives tonight, which is always good to hear. And then we did have our policy meeting two weeks ago, the third or fifth. And we are bringing forward 10 new policy changes, minor grammatical changes or statute updates, nothing really too involved, but there are two new ones to review. But other than that, I don't have anything else.
Okay, and I just want to say that for all the businesses that were here tonight, for the Wasby Business Honorable, we appreciate everything that they do in being involved with our district. And I just wanted to, yeah, provide a little bit of an update for the Fall Regional Meeting that several of us were at. There was a pre-meeting workshop. The presentation was Students Can't Learn If They're Not There, which provided insights and strategies to tackle chronic absenteeism. Wasby laid out the legal framework on attendance and truancy, what is expected in regards to communication and policy. And then they had several examples of what other districts in Wisconsin have done to successfully address attendance challenges. Then we had dinner before our, before the regular regional meeting. And I guess for those that were there with me, I learned to not eat cooked carrots in public, right? It'll be a while before I do that again, so.
Little fork, maybe.
I warned you, it's slippery.
All right, there was a feature presentation. It explored the, it was titled Strategic Focus and Accountability. Wasby discussed how to adopt a clear vision, develop effective plans, and align resources with student outcomes. And then we had a hands-on exercise at each table where we were asked to share an example of a strategic goal that made a real difference, how we went about it and what the outcomes were. So at our table, we talked about how we work towards making sure that every student has a, feels a sense of belonging in our district. We talked about how we have that on our district dashboard, how the district sends out annual surveys every year. And I gave an example of one way that we can do this is through all the different co-curricular activities that we have in the district, that there should be something out there for everyone to feel like they belong. So we talked a little bit about that. We recognized all the district's outstanding work in this area and how successful it has been. So after the meeting, actually, I had a number of other districts come up to me asking more questions about what we're doing, how we're doing it, that they would like to also do something similar. So I'm expecting a few emails here in the near future on, on some of what we do, so. Then there was a legislative update done by the Wasby Government Relations Staff. They recapped the 2025, 27 state budget. They talked about where things are at for the remainder of the legislative session. Uh, they talked about where things are at for the remainder of the legislative session. And then they talked about the Wasby resolutions. Those will be ones that come before, at, to the state convention that Maggie will be a representative at. Um, they, there's one more meeting by the Wasby Policy and Resolutions Committee in January to finalize what that looks like. And then lastly, uh, Wasby Executive Director Dan Ross Miller concluded the evening with a report to members about different activities and the direction of Wasby. And he talked, um, a fair amount about the, um, upcoming speakers at the convention. So that's kind of a report out on that. And, uh, moving on to item ten point three. So the board has been provided notes from the May seventh policy committee meeting. Please take a look at those. Also, the board has been provided with ten policies that the policy committee recommends for consideration. If a board member has any questions regarding a policy, they should reach out to Dr. Mueller prior to the October twenty-seventh meeting where policies will appear on the consent agenda for approval. And then our upcoming board meeting schedule on October twentieth. There is an Excellence in Education Committee meeting at five PM. On October twenty-seventh, we have our budget hearing at six PM, followed by the annual meeting, followed by a regular board meeting. And then on November fifth, we have, um, uh, Wellness Committee meeting at three forty-five PM. So is there any other business that needs to come before the board at this time? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Is that Barb? Barb moved?
Second.
Bridgette? Bridgette second to adjourn the meeting at eight thirty-one PM. Motion carried. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye.